I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Robyn Chetwell?
Here.
Mr. Rickandrew?
Present.
Mr. Smoak?
The purpose of said hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following: Resolution Number 96, 2024, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant, liquor license R. 6138, currently owned by AARK Hospitality Dixon City TK LLC, and located at 4011 Commerce Boulevard, Dixon City, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18519, to Sriji Mart LLC, located at 338 Franklin Avenue, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18503, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
Is there anyone in here that would like to speak on this liquor license? Glennish, you're for the council meeting, not for this?
I thought we were talking about the city's safety and health.
Oh, that'll be next. This is just the liquor licensing. Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This public hearing is adjourned. Thank you. Now, we will move on. Thank you for coming. Chief Carroll, if you would take over.
Sure. Good evening, counsel. Thank you for having us. The purpose for our visit this evening is to, I want to discuss the health and safety landscape analysis that was conducted by Muffelhund that was funded by the city of Scranton, that was approved by this body, and it was published last month, and I have reviewed the report myself, and I have my opinions of it, but this council did fund it, and we wanted to give you the opportunity past month to review it, and come before you tonight to answer any questions that you may have had on the report itself. With me tonight is the Muffelhund team, the president, Hamera Khan, and the executive director, Adnan Ansari, and they will review, do a quick summary of the report for you, and then answer any questions that you may have. Sorry.
Thank you very much, chief, and thank you very much to the council for giving us the opportunity to, first of all, do this report and then come here and present it in front of you, and also to the mayor's office and to the citizens themselves. We were here, actually, I think nearly a year ago, and when we were starting this project, and we discussed that with you, and now we have submitted the report, completed, submitted. I just wanted to very briefly give you an overview of what the objective was. You all have seen the report, you all have gone through it, so we would be very happy to have a very open discussion on that. When we were asked to do this report, the primary challenges of the city that we were brought to us were that, we can call them two. One is that there is an increased youth violence threat in the city, which is coming from outside the city itself. There were gangs which are outside the city which might be coming in and committing some acts which are not, of course, welcome. And second, there's a growing population of Scranton for that to see what these assets of the city are that need to be utilized better and utilized more inclusively. And based on that, we were required to do a landscape analysis, then do an inventory of the existing assets, see what the resources are available, and identify some gaps. And that's what we did. We did it basically in two or three different approaches. One is having a macro overview, looking at the data of the city, seeing what type of issues there are, what interact with each other. Then we reached out to organizations in the city, had discussions with them one-on-one, and what we went into the most depth was to announce the call for service for the last five years of the police data. And based on that, we have put together this report. The report is with you. I would be happy to answer any questions you have about this, and my colleague, who's the co-author, Hamera Khan, we did this together, and we will be happy to answer any questions you have. Please.
I'd just start off by saying, could you just go over a, like, a brief synopsis of your findings and what you, what in general you've found?
Sure. I can do that. So, as I mentioned, we did the macro analysis of the quantitative findings. What we found out was that in the city, the top risk factors that are contributing to concerns in the city among the citizens are housing shortages. That is one major issue that came up. There's a lack of some social support system that citizens feel over here, and the quality of education came up also. So that was one, that those are things. Health risks in the city are a big concern. They are becoming a risk factor, health concerns, but primarily it's mental health that needs to be looked at. Income inequality also has been coming up repeatedly as a big issue. However, there are some protective factors in the city. One is the population diversity. That is considered a protective factor, that there's diversity in the population, in the citizens of the city, so that helps in becoming a healthier and a safer city. Second, people are very satisfied with the community's safety in general, the service there is. That is something that was brought up. And based on that, we, and this came up from the quantitative analysis, and then with the qualitative analysis, discussing with more than 30 organizations we reached out to. In the landscape analysis, there are more than 150 organizations in the city which are providing services to the residents and citizens of Scranton. There are more than 150. We have provided, put together all that information and shared it with the city itself, but we reached out to those which are directly in contact of some sort with the city, and there are more than 30. In that, we had very much in-depth discussions, and I can go into that in more detail, but that will take a lot of time. What is most important is actually the call for service analysis. That's what we did, in that, a few things were, what showed up that the call for, there's a declining frequency of the call for service, that there's, that which has indicated that the city is becoming a safer place, that there are less calls. The nature of the calls is shifting. There is more proactive calls rather than reactive calls in general. And then we did a shift-based analysis, which shows where the staff is, at what time of the day and the month, and the staff is needed the most. So it's the second shift during the day that there's a huge pressure on the service that is needed, and also in the summertime, if you look at the year. In the summertime, there's the highest number of calls for service that come up. But what was most alarming is that in the call for service, there's a huge increase in the calls for mental health issues. That is, when the police is called in, when there are mental health concerns, whereas that is not a responsibility of the police service, that is a responsibility of mental health service providers. So that puts an extra burden on the police service, whereas, as I earlier mentioned, the mental health concerns in the city are going up, their needs are going up, but there are not enough resources. So that is where a lack of assets in the city does exist, and that is a major gap that we identified. Based on that, we came up with, I can go on a lot, but just a few things. The recommendations we ended up with in this report, you will see, is that there has to be more inclusive data analysis, more regular data analysis, and more to understand how the trends are shifting with the changing population, how the trends in the city are shifting, the demographics are changing, and the needs are changing. That needs to be regularly looked into. And there has to be more involvement of the community resources. A lot of organizations we talked to, they felt that they are not being involved in finding the solutions or providing the services that the city needs. So there is a disconnect between the city and the community organizations. And then, also, we, in the discussion with the chief and the other police staff, and what we have noticed, that there is a need for the police department itself to adapt to the change of the needs of the city. As the demographics change, there are more minorities need to be included in the police teams, and the police itself already is more proactive, as the data showed, and that trend has to continue. That's just in a very brief overview of the report. It's a fairly detailed report. I can go into, I can answer more questions, I can go into more detail. If there's anything important that I missed, then, oh yes, correspondent models, you can talk about that.
One of the findings is, hi, everyone. So, because there's a shift in the types of calls for service, so especially around mental health and some of the social issues, part of our recommendation is that Scranton is already using correspondent models for service delivery. So that means is that, for example, if you have someone who's calling in, if there's a call for service on someone who has mental distress, that law enforcement responds, but they also respond with a medical professional. So when you do that, you can actually, they are able to de-escalate the situation, and it can actually reduce the cost to the city. And depending on the type of call, because some of these calls are repeated calls from the same addresses, that there is more active engagement of social workers and medical professionals in the responses, and to build out service delivery models again, which, so that it's not, it's not just law enforcement responding to every type of thing, because they are not mental health professionals, they are not social workers, and you need to have those teams who are able to respond to that need.
I have a question with reference to that. Chief, didn't we start a program with Scranton Counseling that, I forget the exact name of it, you probably remember it, where we, when you're in a situation where you know you're dealing with mental health issues, you have a counselor come with you to help deal with some of those issues, especially like suicidal-type things or issues like that?
Yes, we do. That was the co-responder program?
Yeah, co-responder.
Right, and that is still active. It is, it's not optimized yet, and we're still feeling our way through it. It's a relatively new concept in law enforcement, and we are working our way to make that more effective as we work through it. There is, glad you brought that up, the response to mental health is delicate for us, and this report helps me with that conversation. The objective third party that brings this conversation to light isn't, my words can't be twisted or be viewed as in one shape or another, where the police are trying not to be at a call, or we're trying to avoid responsibilities. It helps us delineate what our responsibilities are when we go to these calls for service. Ideally, we would like to expand that co-responder program, and we're trying to find ways to structure that so it better supports us.
Now, at this point in time, is the county running a similar program? I feel like I just saw the CIT program with the county advertised on Kaiser Avenue. That seems like a very similar program.
It is a training, and that is for the officers to learn. So the crisis intervention training for the officers, all new officers that come aboard go to this 40-hour course to learn basically how to deal with these scenarios. And it's learning of the mental disabilities that subjects may have that we encounter. It's basically to be in their shoes so that we don't overreact to a situation, or we act accordingly to make sure that we're providing a service and that we're helpful when we get on scene. So they complement each other. A CIT-trained officer is always nice to have on these calls, but it does not take the place of the higher level of training of a mental health professional. It is the emergency knowledge when you get on scene to manage that situation.
Now, some of the things that we've just been talking about, counseling coming from maybe that trauma approach, things like that, that's been going back, the Scranton Police adopted some of that going back to 2008 or prior to that, correct?
2009 is when we first came on board with that, and the whole de-escalation aspect and all of our approach to these types of calls when dealing with mental health, especially when it's readily identifiable, so that our goal is to provide services to the subject in need. For those that, subjects that are in crisis, that we may not have the training to de-escalate it, or to comment, or the professional training to determine what the next step should be medically, that's what we rely on the mental health professionals for.
So I'm understanding that what you're recommending is pretty much already happening, right, in some form?
I'm sorry, will you say that again, please?
What I'm taking from all of this is what Muffelhund is recommending with that component, with, you know, a partner, with a social worker or someone because of mental health, some of this has already taken place, it's just been identified twice, correct?
Thankfully, yes, some of...
So why, my takeaway from this is that the report that, like, we failed. Every entity has failed to a degree. We failed to a degree. I don't believe that it's happened, and that was my take from the report, that, and still, at the end of the day, you know, you can blame different entities, or not enough this, not enough that, but it starts at home, too. I don't see that even mentioned, where the holistic approach should probably start at home, too. I don't see that anywhere mentioned as, I honestly believe that, I mean, I'll be honest with you. My mother was a widow, 33 years old. My father was a firefighter that died. She raised three children, boys, on her own. We didn't have the best housing, but we didn't blame it, our behavior. We turned out pretty well. Never got in too much trouble, but we didn't take a different path and then would hope somewhere down the road that the blame wouldn't be on me and it'd be on everybody else that failed us.
Well, correct. You are a success story, but each individual experience is different. What we're saying here really is it's a community problem, and we're trying to draw that, and I thought the report did a very good job at it. We're not making excuses for anyone or the cause. What we're saying is the community structure has failed, and yes, there are a lot of failures all the way through. People need to repurpose themselves, and really, it's a rallying cry for the community to come together, recognize this. Why I like this is because a lot of these problems get thrown in the lap of the police department. What are you going to do about it? It's different when you hear it from a third-party vendor who's objective to this rather than hear it from me. The police department is not the answer to all of these problems, and really what we're saying is, where are the answers to it? We have identified some problems. These are community problems that require community solutions, and we're not making excuses for everybody. I think the Muffelhund team did a good job of pointing out some of the deficiencies in the systems.
And to add to that, yes, we, when we started this report, as you said, and Chief you mentioned, we were absolutely not aware that some of this effort has been started, but when it comes out from an outside perspective that, okay, these are what the gaps are, then it sort of strengthens what probably has already been discussed in the city, but and so it just shows that we put more emphasis that this is an approach that needs to be developed further. And we did, in the report, look at a few successful models in the country, and we have summarized those, and that those can be studied in further depth and then taken to scale here. To our understanding, such co-responder models fully are implemented fully at scale to date.
So from what I'm hearing from the piece that we just spoke about, that was something that was already in place, but we could bolster it. We could always get better at everything we do. So it's something that's been identified through this report, but it was also identified several years ago, and it's been something that we're going to bolster a little bit more now.
Right, we're working towards it, and you have to remember, it was nice to hear because we were being graded, is how I looked at it. They were analyzing everything that we did, and it was reassuring to know that we're on the right track in a lot of these, in a lot of these areas, and specifically in the mental health. We are not great at it, we're not perfect at it, but we are headed in the right direction, and we're trying to get better at it.
So now, I mean, when I, oh, you wanted to say something? Go ahead.
So, yes, Scranton has an existing program, right, with Scranton Counseling, and that's around mental health issues, but there's other types of calls for service. So for example, when there's drug overdoses, or there are certain types of domestic issues which are playing out, and that's when you actually need either EMTs or social workers. So it would actually be an expansion of the types of correspondent models which are being deployed already in Scranton, because it's, so the one type needs a mental health professional, you also need social workers and EMTs. And in doing research in terms of other cities which have deployed models, they're able to deploy multiple types of correspondent models depending on what the call is for. So you don't have to send a mental health person if it's for a domestic case, but you do need to send a social worker, especially if it's coming from a repeated address. So it's just parsing out some of those details and expanding it out further in that way.
Yeah, as long as it's identified in the call, when the call comes in, it could be addressed.
But how do you differentiate between that call? Okay, so it's a mental health call. All right, people have problems, I get that, and we need to help them, but how do we know if it's not going to become violent? How do we know if there's not a gun there? Like, so both have to go, right? We don't just send one, obviously, and these mental health workers, I mean, are they going to be city employees? Is that per recommendation? Or we're just going to partner again with some, with another organization? And can I?
Yes. Just like we do now with our co-responder program, when we do bring them onto a scene, it is our job first to make sure that the scene is safe before we bring anybody else in, especially, you know, for ourselves, for everyone involved, that scene is safe. Where we benefit is, some of these situations are time-consuming, and they require an expertise and training that we don't have, and that's where that follow-on comes in with the co-responder and teaming up with a police officer, and we get our other resources back in service for other calls for service.
Chief, is it fair to say, when you, sometimes you get a call, and there's the stress in a home, what have you, you don't know, a lot of times you don't know exactly what the situation is, there's an emergency, somebody's held up in a room, somebody's holding people. As you said, the first thing you do is to secure the site, make sure, you know, the community's safe, and you tighten up the area, but, you know, at that point, isn't it often to try to ascertain as much information about exactly who's in there, what's going on, what type of individual's in there, and if it's determined that you have someone in there that's having mental issues or distress, at that point, you may end up bringing a co-responder in there, a social worker, to help resolve the situation rather than going in guns-a-blazing or however the protocol is to try to resolve the issue? I'm saying that when you, each call is different, and you have to evaluate it once you get there, right?
It is a very fair assessment. Nothing is as it ever seems, or as it's reported. So to answer your question, yes, we have to do a lot of research prior to getting on scene, as well as the investigative process while on scene. We treat, we tend to treat nothing that is routine. We take it as it comes, we analyze it, and each and every call is unique. So it's tough to sit here and talk about, you know, whether things are black and white and what we know at the time. Everyone is unique, and it's all in the name of safety. Everything we do is in the name of safety, to include bringing the co-responder in.
Yeah, I guess that's the point I was getting to. Every situation is unique, and based on the situation and immediately the research, you get, start going, try to figure out who you're dealing with, you know, who's in the home, you know, what's their background, do they have a record, do they have a mental health disability, all that plays a role in what actions are going to be taken to help resolve the issue.
Yes, absolutely.
Fair?
Yes.
Okay.
So now, when looking at the analysis, some of the data, it looks like from the police department especially, is actual numbered data. You're looking at shifts, you're looking at types of crime, you're looking at all different kinds of, you know, factors when it comes to that. Some of the other data, and maybe you could tell us how you came to your findings, but it's a lot of survey data. You surveyed the Parks Department, OECD, some of the nonprofit groups. With the SPD info, I could see raw data and numbers, but with some of these other findings, are we using raw data and numbers, or is it more the survey style that you utilize in your past practice?
Yes. So it can be divided into three different sections. As you mentioned, one is from the SPD, the data that for calls for service, that's very clear, and there's a quantitative analysis in the beginning that is more from the publicly-available data that's available for the city of Scranton as well, for multiple sources. And then there was a qualitative analysis in which we interviewed individuals of different organizations in the city, and we have provided that information also, on whom we ended up in, who responded to our calls and whom we had discussions with. So there is a qualitative discussion based on which there's information also there. So there, you can put it in three: publicly-available data, in-person contact with individuals in the city, and then the police-owned data.
Was there any attempt to involve the public in general rather than organizations, you know, like citizens that maybe aren't tied in with a group that are just living in the neighborhood and, you know, experiencing a lot of what we're facing?
That was one of my concerns as well. I was about to ask that question, too.
Yes, so this was focused primarily towards organizations providing service. That was the nature of the report, that it looked at the landscape analysis and do the asset inventory. So that was the requirement. It was not to have a general survey designed to the public. That is a very different nature of a report then. So that can be conducted, that would have a very different...
It can be, but it wasn't included in this report.
No, it was absolutely not planned for it, it was not called for us.
Can I ask why it wasn't included? Just, to me, it seems like it would make a lot of sense.
The RFP that was responded to did not request that.
So it wasn't written into the RFP that we actually communicate with the citizens who are experiencing
Yes.
the violence or the mental health issues or the issues in their neighborhoods. They're living next to, they're dealing with, boy, that would have, I wish I was involved with crafting that RFP, because that sure as hell would have been included in it.
Especially when you refer to the word landscape, that's all of us, and it should have been all of us. So I have a quick two-part question. So early in your synopsis, you recommend, you made a recommendation for more analysis. So is that more analysis to be conducted by your group? Or the second part to the question is to the chief, do you think this landscape analysis has provided you enough data to, you know, make the corrections or strengthen what you already admitted to exist, or do you think we need more analysis or another report?
Want to talk the first part?
Yeah, I can. So what I mentioned is that ongoing analysis, that based on the data that is available, that will continue to be more and more available, the decision-making should be based on data analysis. That should be inclusive data. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that this is just always to be in continuation, but also to answer your question, already, what, to our knowledge, there have been more services that are being required from other organizations which are continuation of this. So we are not directly involved in that, but such analysis is being conducted already further. further.
How often do you recommend an analysis like that taking place?
From purely, it should be, like, from the way the world is going, it has to be very ongoing analysis, data analysis.
Looking at the calls for service data, that analysis should be ongoing. So it should not be done, because we were looking at five years cumulative till the end of 2023, and this is something which should be done on-
You're saying on an annual basis?
Quarterly.
Oh, no, quarterly, maybe monthly even, because there's, the dynamics are changing, and if you see that there are different dynamics for different months, and that's to make sure that as, that SPD can stay on top of the current situation, so that when things change, they can see it right away rather than retrospectively. The types of analysis we did and the types of calculations, et cetera, we've done, those should be run directly from within SPD, right? So it's not that, we're not saying that we have to do it, we are recommending that there are certain types of data that SPD should collect, that SPD should be structuring into their regular decision-making and how they are sorting and dealing with their records. So it's part of, we are recommending for their system, not that it should be out, like, done by us, but it should be done by them.
And that's information you're collecting on these calls, and on the, on each issue as it arises, we're collecting data as we go through that. And it's, I mean, the information that we're talking about, that the findings came out, comes from that collected data from the SPD, right?
Yes, that is correct. So the key point, the takeaway for me is, the violence in our community is a symptom of a greater problem. We, as the police department, can always respond to the violence, we could do the interventions on the street, the criminal enforcement, to what end? So the landscape analysis, we're looking at, how do we prevent this pipeline from occurring where we're always getting new people in to commit crime? That long-term strategy for crime prevention. Why I like this? This is the most in-depth analysis ever conducted for public safety that I'm aware of. And it is going to help us optimize our own efforts. It was enlightening in a lot of ways, especially the way they analyzed our data. Yes, we report monthly to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, and we have also, since working with Muffelhund, found ways to analyze our data using a threshold analysis, where we take that monthly, this past month, and we compare it to the last five years. And how does that equate? We start to see trends, whether they're rising, falling, or staying the same, brings us to our attention early, where we can start looking at areas that might need our attention. This upcoming, we are investing in more programming, technology that'll help us better analyze more frequently the data into dashboards for internal use, as well as in the future, we're looking for external-facing dashboards that would be educational for the public in general. Additionally, we're looking for technology, we talked about engaging the community, our programming is going to do more in-person engagement with the community. What we're doing now is part-time beat officers engaging in certain areas of the city. We're looking to expand that so we get it more often. Additionally, leveraging the technology to where we can get those surveys, you know, those post-encounters with the police, surveys to see what their experiences were. This is in its infancy, I'm still researching the programming for it, but I hear what you were saying, and I'm interested in it as well, to get that feedback from our citizens on a real-time basis to see how our police department's performing.
It seems like that's one of the largest recommendations, or one of the largest, biggest deliverables of this report, is the data analysis and being able to track that data, you know, break it down, analyze it, and then use it to develop programs to address the situations, and I think that's important. So you're fairly pleased with that aspect of it, Chief, is that fair to say?
I am. Like I mentioned before, it was, it's a report card for us, not knowing how it was going to work out. We do what we believe is best, and the best practices, you know, we're in the middle of accreditation and working for best practices on policy, and the same thing for operations. So it was reassuring to know we're on the right path, it validated a lot of our efforts, and it showed where we need to refocus some of our efforts so we can get better.
Is there a plan, do you have anyone specifically on the police department that is in charge of kind of tracking and analyzing data at this point?
Yes, I do.
You do?
It is to the importance that even in this time of short staffing, that I have a dedicated officer to that, because it is that important.
And something else you mentioned, I think is critically important, is the fact that when you do, when you are able to get police officers out into the community, and, you know, when I say the community, I mean neighborhoods, projects, you name it. Getting them out, meeting, meeting the neighbors, meeting the people that live in that community, developing a relationship, a rapport, that there, you build a trust-based type environment, you tend to learn a lot about that community. And you learn a lot about what's happening in those communities, and that really helps lead to, in many cases, being proactive rather than having to be reactive. As a former high school principal, one of the best things I did to keep the school safe, I talked to a lot of kids. Kids trusted me, they told me stuff, and I would never, ever reveal my sources, never, and they knew it. So they'd tell me stuff, they'd tell me there were things happening in that building that they knew that was never going to come back to them. And I think when you can build a high-trust type environment like that, and you can glean information from our citizens, and they, there's some trust built up, then I think that that goes a long way at improving police relations and helping the police department be more proactive in addressing the issues that we're facing. And once again, I don't think that there's any one single answer to, you know, all the problems that, you know, we're facing, and many, quite frankly, many communities are facing across the country, but I'm glad to hear that, that you have somebody dedicated to be analyzing that data, and that you're looking to, as the report has indicated, to track more data and then analyze it and use it to the benefit of the community.
Well, this summer, the community police program was very effective. I heard great kudos to that from residents, that they were thrilled to see the community police program that was done this summer, and that they were thrilled with it, they were happy to see it, so it was positive. I agree with that.
I wanted to ask about calls for 988, like, the recommendations to increase building, like, community education and awareness on that. What are, what are your thoughts on ways that we can utilize that source?
Our role when we respond to mental health calls especially, and a lot of our interactions when we discuss 988 is on the service call basis. We've had discussions recently as tonight on how do we, and what's the role of the police department to expand that into a, you know, a community, an informational approach, that programming like we would for crime prevention? How do we get that message out proactively for 988? Again, it is, the police department can help, but it is a larger burden on the community itself, maybe city government, to get that word out. It's not widely known, and many people hear it for the first time when we bring it up. So there's work to be done, and the police department will gladly participate, but it's a broader approach for everyone.
Anyone else?
I guess the last question. So again, when we looked at the police data, there was actual numbers that go on, there was a lot of other findings, a lot of other areas, housing, income, food security, homelessness, mental health, which we've discussed a little bit more length, transportation, education, all of the information that came out in all of those topics, that came through survey, like, survey data, correct? You spoke with members of the group that you brought in, as well as Parks and Rec, OECD, and then that's where it came, that sort of, that information came from, rather than data sources, correct?
So both. That came from, so the first analysis we did was on the, looking at the public sources of data, and did the quantitative analysis, and then discussed that with the organization, with the individuals, like, the representatives of organizations in the city, and that was from them also. So it, we made sure that it was confirmed, yes.
Okay, and then, the police data is ongoing, it should be ongoing, as we've discussed, but this, as we get into any one of these areas, this is where you feel more research should be done as we address each one?
One of the common responses we received from these, many of these organizations and the personnel is that they have more assets, they have knowledge that can be utilized better with, by the city itself, by the city administration, and the programs that are being implemented by the city. So, yes, that is where we do recommend that they need to be involved more, and there can, there is a huge, these are huge assets of the city themselves, that they are sitting here relatively underutilized, that can be utilized better.
So the educational data, did you reach out to anybody in the Scranton School District for a discussion?
I'm sorry?
When you gathered the data regarding education, and did you reach out to anybody in the Scranton School District?
So-
To assist with that data or number?
We did not gather any data on education, this is public sources of data. We did not ourselves, there was no primary data collection on this. Oh, so Lamara mentioned that there, these were, as you, Mr. Schuster, mentioned, the community organizations, they did mention this as a concern. So in, from that aspect, but we did not do any primary data collection, but from the qualitative analysis, that was confirmed, yes.
So we're saying, I mean, one of the first statements there is that education has deteriorated. What types of numbers are we using? Are we looking at how many children out of the school district are attending college? How many are graduating? What's the GPA? What types of information is being utilized?
So from what I recall, the indicator was about graduation rate? Yeah, confirm that, please.
It's on high school enrollments, graduations, how many people are attending college. We're looking at school spending per student as well, to see what is, basically, the access of the quality of education.
I mean, when it comes to graduation rates, when we take a look at special education, that population is growing, especially emotional support. When we look across the different, whether it's autism spectrum, emotional support, these categories here, emotional support is one that has the lowest percent of graduation rates, and we're seeing that category of students increasing. So do we feel that that has an effect on what that overall graduation rate is?
We use the numbers for the regular population, not for any of the special education, and to be honest, that is not available either, that's not publicly available.
So that information was just built, just derived from straight, regular education?
From just the regular student population and the graduation rates, and so we looked at, well, we looked at high schools, but we also looked at primary and secondary schools, and we looked at also if there is tertiary education, colleges, universities, the presence of them, and whether you actually have the population attending them.
All right, Chief, thank you, thank you for coming and giving us all this information on your report. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.